I call this meeting of Deerfield Elementary School Committee to order at 6:06 PM. And I want you to start off the meeting by acknowledging the passion of Martin Barrett. She served many roles in our schools, most recently as superintendent, and she did a lot of good for the district, and she'll be missed. Okay, our first order of business is to review and approve the minutes of January 19.
There was one correction, and it was my misspeaking. It wasn't whoever took the notes. I think I said ARPA money was the money being put in a capital reserve fund for the collaborative, but it was PPP money. That was the big $4 million overage. So I felt like that was an important distinction to make, given how much money we were talking about. So if we could correct just that one part of the minutes.
To say it's not ARPA, but rather?
It's PPP alone.
PPP alone.
Money, yes.
Okay. Great.
But I make a motion to approve the back draft. Alex, do you have a follow-up? Come in, show your person in your notes. Eric Jacob?
That's true.
Oh, oh, yes, I forgot what I was answering. Yes, I approve the minutes.
Ken?
Yes.
Mary?
Yep.
Ken?
Yes.
Very yes. Financial statement warrants?
I emailed you out the expense reports. The only thing, and I didn't comment on this in my email, because you had sent that message already, but you want to talk about the HVAC. Because that will be an additional cost that wouldn't be in this report yet on the heat issue.
Right. I don't have the exact numbers, but I did send an email to you guys on Monday regarding the cold spike did cause us to have three different leaks in three different kind of transference units in the building. And they were been serviced and repaired, and then had to come back and be serviced again, because one of them was probably again. And at the same time, explanation of why it happened is that we have like three different systems that have been put in over the years, going back from even before Valesco. And then the heaters and apparently there are certain dampers that weren't shutting, and this is the first major cold we've had. So then we also had to bring in Siemens, who's our kind of the HVAC electrical.
Energy management.
Energy management system, thank you. And we had to bring them in to reprogram it so that those dampers close when it gets that cold. So it was a combination. So we were fortunate that the water pump did not go on when it froze up. It should have. Because we would have major flooding in those areas.
So that expense is not in this report yet, obviously, because we don't have to bill, and the reports were only through January 31st, so.
So it's around $3,000, I think.
If you have other questions about line items, I'm happy to take them, but there were no other major changes since the last meeting. And nine warrants were signed electronically totaling $117,873.18.
And thank you, Darius and Shelley, for keeping us apprised of the HVAC problems during the cold snap, so.
You know, just had to say, you know, I imagine some people saying, well, who's monitoring building that kind of stuff with Bill? You know, I did meet with Bill before the weekend, and he had a plan to go through every single building to make sure he was on all the buildings. And, you know, everything looked and appeared to be on. But wasn't. And so we don't know when it froze during the day, and just when we came in when things were getting chilly, and then immediately they realized they had a problem. So, and he did go to all five buildings and make sure everything was, and there was minor adjustments to each building to make sure things were running properly, but we did not catch this one.
Did you hear about a damper that wasn't programmed to the right way, or what?
So, and again, I can have him write a note to you guys about exactly what happened, but there's different control systems that control the outside air and inside air, and they've been put in at different times with different systems. So it was originally programmed prior to the new boilers, I was told. That was put in a few years ago, all being done by different companies. So it was kind of, they believe that's supposed to be the cops, and so he brought them in to fix that. And the other reason that we never seen the problem before is we'd never had cold spikes like that. So at least now, since the new boilers, we believe that's leaves. Again, running off maybe third-person information on Bill and who he talked to, but they believe it occurred when they put the new boilers, that was not set up.
All right, no other comments on the financial statements? Can you move on to the principals' report?
I shared a principals' report we do for your review. If you have any questions, let me know.
Any questions or comments? Okay, next up is public comments. I know we have a couple of people in present and several remotely. Does anyone have anything to speak in public comment? The moment, just in case people are trying to connect. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone speaking or raising a hand or whatever they can do here. So we'll move on to unfinished business, the year 24 budget.
So I did email out an updated report late today after Darius, Tina and I kind of regrouped and reviewed what we sent out yesterday and prepped for today, and so we added some additional items to that. I did print some paper copies. Majority of the information is the same. We just added some administrative recommendations. All right, so I'm going to start by reviewing where we were at with the first meeting and the first budget draft, which was in January. We presented a 7.15% budget increase, was just shy of $365,000 increase over last year. There were several factors relating to that increase, one which being wages, which was just COLA and steps for teachers and IAs, and then increases for non-contractual staff. We also had a facilities adjustment of about $20,000 for some small facilities accounts that had been over budget in prior years. And then we had to take into consideration revolving fund changes. So our early childhood revolving account expenses are exceeding revenue based on the current tuitioned in students who are residents, but they're paying tuition. I know we had a big discussion about what that preschool means on the report. But we had to reduce the early childhood revolving expenses by $52,000. We did the same for school choice, because our school choice expenses are exceeding our revenue at this point. And then special education revolving, we had paid $60,000 for transportation. We no longer have a tuitioned-in student into that program, so that expenditure needs to come off. So each of those factors correlated to the 7.15% increase. We also talked about a request for two additional positions, a social worker slash special education position or a behavior interventionist. And did I get those right this time?
Tina?
I still have them wrong.
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter. That was an additional $127,000 cost to add those two new requests, and so that put us well over 9% for the budget increase. We took those off. So we had a large discussion about what those numbers were compromised of or are made of, and then decided to sit with it, and then we would come back to you with next steps and second draft. So there have been some changes since the January meeting. They're nothing related to any of the increases. They're natural things that have happened that have reduced our budget to 5.25% is what the second draft is at. That was due to a reduction in special education transportation expenditures based on actual transportation routes for next year for our out-of-district placements. Our special education director came to me after that January meeting when she got my information and said, we're going to have a reduction there. And then additionally, we did have a personnel change. We have a staff member who was on an LOA submit reservation that she's not returning next year, so that was a natural reduction in the budget. So we were able to take off in about $90,000 there. So that's great news that we could come that far. Otherwise, we haven't really done anything else at this point to make reductions. We wanted to continue the conversation with you tonight as we prep for March meeting. So the next section is reduction considerations, and I'm going to talk quickly about a couple of these, but then we really want to get into the enrollment pieces, because as administration, we feel like that's the point of the piece where we can really make some change and bring our budget down moving into next year and considering the future outlook based on the population of the school. So if we wanted to go in with a 3% budget, which I know we haven't said that or established that, I just wanted to give you what that would look like dollar-wise. We would be looking at reducing about $115,000 from the existing budget as it currently stands at the 5.25. To get us to 3, $115,000 would have to come off. Some options to reduce include the use of SRR3 funds. I talked about that at the last meeting, that we do have a significant amount of SRR remaining. So we could offset some wage costs and transportation costs. We could reduce the facilities lines that we increased by $20,000, although I don't recommend that. We really need that money. It's not, we're not being frivolous. We're not adding new facilities needs. We're really just trying to cover the costs that we already have that have been in deficit for multiple years. But it is an option if we're talking about crunching the numbers and trying to bring that down. So the last piece that we're going to get into a little bit further on the next couple of pages are a reduction of staffing and programs. And this is never something that we really want to go to. This is usually last resort. Obviously, we love the staff that we have. We need the staff that we have. And we certainly don't want to cut anyone's position and have their personal life impacted. But we are at a point where this decision really is enrollment-driven, and it's a conversation that we feel strongly we need to be having as part of the budget discussion. Any questions before I keep going?
I guess I just was, just to make sure I understand that there are that there are three options, and one is to utilize SRR3 funds. Second is to, or is it a combination?
Combination, yeah. Yeah, I just sort of threw some ideas out there for us to consider that if we absolutely were not in a position to reduce class sizes and staffing and programs, then we would have to go to SRR. We don't have another choice. Our budget is level service right now, and we have a 5.25% increase. So we would have to consider those other options. And we didn't want to come in and just say, we need to cut. We wanted to give you everything that's on the table to consider.
The overall goal of, or the goal is to get down to the 3%?
Generally, you know, our guide is around a 3% increase. Deerfield has come in above that. I think I gave you that information. We've been under 3% for multiple years, slightly over in one particular year recently, over the last couple of years. At the last page of that report, Eric, I can give you the historical information. So that's sort of our benchmark when we're building budgets and working on things and having that in mind of where we think we should be. That doesn't mean that you couldn't say come in at 2.5 or come in higher, but.
Right, so your town can only grow its budget by 2.5%. So when we are, the percentage of the schools make up, and Deerfield's around 60-ish percent. If we are well over 2.5%, we better be in discussion with the town, because we're going to be taking from other departments and other shares from the town. So usually, the rule is that you want to come in around 2.5. We're looking at trying to come in 3, doing that, see within that. If the committee within your, you know, within your power, you could say, we'll go the town 5%. And you can say, as Bill says, put it up the flagpole and see if they salute. You have that ability as in with your authority. But, you know, those kind of conversations, you're going to be at odds with the finance committee and select board with their priorities and challenges. So after we redo this, you know, as we do this in five different ways in five different towns. Another town, we have a huge budget problem. We actually have budget problems in three of our towns this year. And we can have, start having conversations with those entities, the finance committee and select board, if we can't find our own way out of this. And then we're having that conversation in other towns where we're using SRR money, but if you use SRR money, you're only putting it down one year, and you're going to come back the following year with a problem plus, because now you built another year of mine to that, and so you're going to have even greater problems with your budget in the future. So if we go through all this, you can kind of get all the different options, and then it can be any combination thereof, or you can say, you can reject all of them and say, you know, if you want something different, let's kind of process here. So our job is just to guide you and you guys make the decision.
I just wanted to get a handle on exactly how much money we're talking about. Is it then that it is the $115,000 that we're trying to find that money? Or is there more than that that we are, like, what is it we absolutely, you know, what is the amount that we're talking about needing? Is there is that number of?
We don't have a number. The town didn't give us a number. And the town doesn't, the town can guess at this point, but they don't have the cherry sheets from the state yet, because they're waiting the governor's budget. So they're kind of, they know they have an idea where it's going to come in, and they have an idea, they have free cash and so on and so forth. So, you know, you know, this is usually the range that we come in is between 2.5 and 3.5 is usually the big range there.
So the $115,000 would be the minimum amount to get us to 3% if we want it to be around the 3%?
That's what I thought of, man. I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't like just a portion of what.
No, that's a great, great clarifying point. What I will say before we continue moving through this is that I think we talked about this a little bit last month, too, is we're not talking about a one-year impact, and I know Ken did mention this, that as we talk about our revolving funds exceeding revenues, our expenses exceeding revenues, there are going to be multiple years that we have to make this shift, where expenses have to come off of other funding sources. We're not eliminating them. They just need to be paid from another pot of money. So, you know, I think where Ken mentioned, if it comes off of one fund, it's going to have an impact on the general fund. So while, yes, we're talking about $115,000 for the current year, I recommend that we're thinking multi-year, and that's part of what the presentation in enrollment.
I think we have to get into the presentation, because we start talking about how that's going down, and you can give an idea of what it impacts.
All right, so enrollment data. So this is based on October 1st, so some of this might look different if an enrollment report went out for February 1st. But as of October 1st, because that's what the state is going to use for Chapter 70 funding, so October 1st numbers. Our enrollment was 334. You can see 278 residents, 56 school choice. Based on Tina's projections of what we're looking at for anticipated class sizes for next year, we're looking at 305, which is a significant reduction from the current year. We're going down in our enrollment. A big piece of it is K and pre-K. Those numbers are going to be a little bit smaller, and then we have a larger sixth-grade class going out. So when the large sixth-grade class goes out, if we don't have a significant number of younger students coming in, we can't offset that loss. So we gave you the number of sections and then the size, class size per section here. You can see that there are some existing classes that already do have 18, 19 students. And then there are some classes with three sections that have much smaller class sizes. Also, looking at the pre-K numbers, we have, based on, I think Kim sent out most recent data to me today, that we do have six spots open in pre-K. I mean, yes, in pre-K, I'm sorry. And then the kindergarten number of 32, that's based on the census. That's not actual students enrolled right now. So that number could actually.
Because today, we have 26 registered.
So.
Not including school choice.
No, school choice. On the census, we have 32 expected, and we have 26 registered right now.
Okay.
Do you have a memory of how much compared to the census, how many, because who's going to choose private?
Typically, we come in right around the census, maybe four over that we get like movements. Is that what you're asking?
Kind of like, you know, how close do you come to that census?
We usually come in pretty close to December. Over the summer, we get a few more, no more than like four. So I think we're looking at like 36 top if we don't ask for choice. We've added a bit of school choice previously.
Could I ask a question?
Of course.
Yeah, as, since we were talking about the kindergarten program, you know, the projection for next year, the enrollment projection at this point in time is 32. You do have 26 already enrolled. This year, I believe you're carrying 38 or 39 kids, kids, students in the kindergarten program, and you have two sections. Is that correct?
Correct.
How is that going, I guess would be my question?
If you're looking at social versus academic, they're two different things. So I think that there's socially healthy classrooms, and they're, they're doing really well with routines and, you know, we actually have a kindergarten IAs here, so please jump in and correct me. Academically, I think that it's a little harder to get to every student to have those small group instructions and get that one-on-one teacher.
Mm-hmm, that's, I mean, that's, that's what I would be surprised if you didn't say that. But I'm trying to get a sense for if we continue the trend, because these are essentially the same numbers that we have this year with two sections. And has it been, I guess my question to you as an administration and as a faculty, in the faculty input as well for our future meetings is, is it a concern or is it a learning curve to figure out the academics? Or, I mean, obviously, we'd like the small sections, but the question I'm asking is, could we, is it practical to consider two sections again next year for kindergarten, which is part of your recommendation later on?
It's part of the recommendations later. So, it's a tight.
Okay.
How many this year? 38 or 36?
There's 38, and just FYI, there's nine, I believe, school choice.
Right.
I think that's the month with, are we doing some choice or not? Pete goes down.
All right. Yeah, continue on here. I just was making a comment that we currently have more applications for pre-K that we have spots available. That does happen. It happened this year as well, and we did have some families that went actually to some other programs within our district. So I just wanted that to be out there. And then I did give you information on the three grades that could potentially be reduced to two sections from three, kindergarten being one of them, second grade and fifth grade. That would give roughly 19 students per class in each of those three grades. You know, and one of the things that we've talked about, oh, good, you're on that chart there. So you can see what the breakdown would be on that chart that is highlighted green and blue, and it is color-coded, because after our conversation, if we were to do this in multiple years, you know, and not reduce all three class grade levels in the same year, we would say to do K in fifth grade in the current year, or FY24, and then reduce second grade in the following year, which would actually be the third grade class at that point. Just if we wanted to pace this out a little bit farther. But if you look at the class sizes based on this change, we would have pretty consistent class sizes throughout the building outside of that men grade level, or throughout the building outside of that one grade level. 18, 19, 20 students per class. You know, and I just want to make the comment that this is not an easy thing for me personally to recommend. I know that we're talking about possibly actually eliminating some staff here if there are no other resignations, if everyone returned from their leave of absence, if all of our, you know, brand-new teachers were happy and stayed within district. This is not comfortable for me. I don't think it is for Darius or Tina either to come with these. And we were not making any of these recommendations lightly. There is a financial side of this that we have to be fiscally responsible, but we're also all human beings and want to take care of our staff. So just want to throw that out there, that we're not making decisions flippantly or recommendations flippantly just because of the numbers. It's, they're hard conversations and hard decisions to make. So do you want to go on to the next little section? I did put in a note here that the impact, I want you to understand the impact of the three teaching position. If we were to reduce those three grade levels to two sections each, it will not result, based on what we're proposing, in a direct budget reduction of three FTE salaries, because we already have talked about our school choice and our early childhood expenses are exceeding revenues. So in order to plan for that for multiple years of bringing expenses off, we would recommend that we basically replace where one teacher is currently paid from school choice, moving that into one of the slots on general fund, just swapping out those numbers there. So there would be a reduction of two full-time salaries on the budget, even though we would be eliminating three positions. And that is roughly about a 2% reduction. So we would be talking about being at 5.25% versus three. I'm sorry, we would reduce to 3.26% instead of 5.25 if we made those changes.
Also, within this, you can jump in if you want, but we, there is no instructional assistant reduction, so we're reducing classrooms, but keeping the same number of instructional assistants, so that you have those larger classrooms. You have more support in those larger classrooms. So that's when they're kind of, it's not, sometimes when we reduce a classroom, you reduce an instructional system with a teacher. That's not the way. It's, it's how it's working in another school. That's not how it's working in this. It's not how it's working in this, but it's how it has worked in the, when we speak in the world.
Shelley, can you predict at all what, if we were to reduce the number of sessions, what that would long-term look like for school choice enrollment and decreased funding there?
Yeah, so that's something we've also talked about, and I did, I explained that, I think, a little bit farther down. If you want to go in there, Darius, skip over the future challenges. On the top of page five. Just the narrative. So you're absolutely right, that if our class sizes are smaller, it limits the opportunity to take additional school choice students, because we don't want our classrooms to become too big with only having two sections. So what we're currently looking at, we have 54 students with this year's claim of 335,000. Our projections for next year, I think Tina had 46 on this sheet. But, you know, I think if we push that a little bit, maybe we get 50 students. So we're looking at a reduction of anywhere between 20,000 and 40,000 next year. So our expenses would be exceeding our revenue by roughly 30,000 at that point. So we would have to move that to another funding source, but that wouldn't happen until FY25. So for the current year, that one change that I'm recommending already of moving the teacher salary over, that would be the only change we make right now, and then we look at future years.
Right, you bring up a good point in future years, because if we look back at school choice, then you can see that when, when the sixth grade leaves, and then the fifth grade leaves, you're starting losing double, you know, the sixth grade's kind of anomaly, but the fifth grade and the fourth grade, we're going to face double-digit numbers with single-digit. And it's, you know, 5,000 plus increment ahead.
The 30,000 deficit you just mentioned, is that with current class sizes and?
That's considering having 40, with the reductions, if we were to reduce the class sections as we're proposing.
And does that also, yeah, does that also consider the changes in staffing?
Yes.
Okay. Because as you say. you look at that fourth, this year's fourth grade class with thirteen school choice students, um, you know, we lose nine next year, we lose five the following year, and then we have this big thirteen student bubble that's going to pass. And, uh, the populations will be decreased. Uh, but I, the reason I was asking about the staffing changes is you will have pulled out in your projections, would that include the pulling out of the ones, um, one position from school choice and putting it over into the general fund? Okay.
Yes. Yep. We'll go down into the bottom of page four. Yep, that chart right there. Um, so this is a little synopsis. Uh, the middle column is before. So this would be where if we were not proposing any classroom size changes, um, what the numbers would look like. And then next year, you can see I reduced the revenue by thirty thousand there, and then the eighty thousand came off for the one teacher. So we're actually, um, going to save a little bit of money next year. And then in FY twenty five, you know, we would have to account for additional reductions in revenue and make some additional changes at that point. So this is a multi-year problem that we're facing. And exactly as Darius just explained, there's going to become a point where your school chat, choice numbers are really small because you're not going to bring in, you know, fifteen or twenty K students. You just aren't going to have capacity to do that. So, you know, in the year that we have four going out, we can replace four kids likely in the classes that we have probably primarily in kindergarten. Um, but in the year that you have thirteen, there's no way you're going to bring so we are going to see choice continue to go down, revenue continue to go down for multiple years. Those are the, oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to clarify what this, what the numbers in that in this are.
Yep.
They are, what is this? What are the, the totals here represented?
Um, those are our fund balances.
Okay.
So the start of the year projection is that one million thirteen thousand, our revenue, our expenses, and then end of year projection. And then if we were to reduce the class sizes, our revenue goes down because we won't be able to take as many choice students. But our expenses are also reducing because we'll move some of that money to general fund with one of the positions that we're cutting, um, leaving our balance still in a good spot. Um.
So it's like the pot of money.
Correct.
That's what's coming in.
Yeah. So school choice i- is really, um, the elementary schools quote unquote for cash. You know, it, it allows us to have a buffer for any emergency projects. God forbid, knock on wood, the leak in the building, you know, the pipes bursting this weekend was three thousand dollars, maybe five thousand dollar cost. That could have been astronomically expensive if we had had water damage throughout the building. Um.
Right. Where you have a student enters that needs a one-to-one in the middle of the year, where are you going to get that money from?
Yeah.
And so, you know, this is our ability from there.
And facilities things, you know, we, we have a running list. We asked a little bit of the talent for support every year, but you know, a freon keeps being an issue with the walk-in. When is that going to become a point where if that goes and we haven't requested as a capital expense, we might be having to find those funds elsewhere. So this sort of gives us that flexibility, whether it's student need or capital need. Um, and that's why we've maintained a significant balance in here because this is our, um, available funds for unforeseen expenditures. So if we don't move expenses off of this, you can really quickly see if you look out a few years, that nine hundred and eighty thousand, if you're overspending by thirty or fifty every year, it's going to go quickly. Um, you know, typically you want to keep, uh, maybe one or two years of prior year revenue in arrears. We're over that. So we do have some flexibility. Um, but you don't want to dwindle that down to say a hundred or two hundred thousand. Like this is not going to save the general fund to use this money, which some people might be thinking that like, oh, you have nine hundred thousand, just offset your budget with that. It's not, that doesn't solve the financial problem. Um, okay. What, what didn't I talk about? What else did we need to talk about? I don't think we need to go through all the charts. I really was just trying to give you guys some information. Um, they're, they're really pretty. It just painted a good picture so you could see where revenue and expenses are. Uh, I did not address, um, much in this report or even talk about really that early childhood is the sa- is having the same problem. I think we could, uh, slowly tackle that as well. I think we could use other funds to help support uh, some of the, excuse me, expenses in early childhood over the next two fiscal years. Expenses in there include IAs. So, you know, if we have to pull an IA off, it's, uh, less impactful than that full teacher salary as far as a budget number, you know, you're talking twenty five, thirty thousand versus sixty or eighty thousand. So if we had to throw that on general fund for a couple of years, I think we could manage that. Um, which is why I didn't get into as much detail, but with school choice, you know, if the majority of our three or four hundred thousand of expenses is wages, a lot for us to tackle versus early childhood is, you know, we probably have to cut fifty thousand off, not hundreds of thousands. So. That's a lot to consider. And I know I've, I've talked a lot. So, um, throw your questions or comments at us.
I have two comments that aren't necessarily like measurable. And I don't know how we get input from teachers or administration on this, but it feels like this decision is like really cementing several years what the climate and culture of the school are going to look like and sort of closing the doors to more school choice. Um, and also I, I think I mentioned this at our last meeting, but we've, since I've come in May, we've talked about the impact of the pandemics on, on the kids and where they're at. And there's a whole lot of work ahead. And I guess, I know we have to make our decisions, but I, I don't want to lose sight of where the kids are at and what support we need. And it, it just doesn't feel like the best time to be sort of like cutting positions of any kind in the school. I recognize we're in a hole and I just, I don't know what we can do to prevent that or kick the can down the road. And I know that's not like the long-term solution, but it, we're also in this very important moment in time where we're recovering from a pandemic and supporting academic learning as well as social learning is so important. As well as like this impact of school choice and closing the door and just having basically two classrooms moving forward. Like that seems like a pretty big decision for us to be making that could impact the next six to ten years of what our school looks like. Um, and I, I don't feel like I have, like I have the numbers, but I don't have the like cultural input and the the sort of like comments from teachers and like what that means to like be able to say yes, cut the positions or like, hey, can we kick the can down the road? If that makes sense.
So last year, we, administration came and we really wanted, at least class sizes had not changed by that much. And we really said we need to keep, it was not the year to start reducing the class sizes. So we did kind of, we did kick that can once last year. Um, that puts us to this year. Um, you're absolutely correct. The trickle effect that this will have on the larger district as well. Because Deerfield is the biggest feeder of school choice to Frontier. And so that now you're, we are already projecting ahead that the middle school is going to get smaller at Frontier. And then the high school gets smaller at Frontier. And things might offset the years. We might get a population boom. You never know where it could go yet. Those kinds of things, but we are looking ahead that when your biggest feeder also starts, is, is getting to shrinking. You know, they even have instead of class sizes of around a hundred at Frontier, you know, we're projecting four years out, so you're on seventy. And so the number of sections, the number of offerings, the number of, you know, that all is going to have a trickle effect.
Well, that impacts the quality of the education that our kids are going to be having up and through.
Yeah, we, I mean, when you get a certain size, and that's why I've always been a proponent of keeping, you know, there's some things about Frontier and the massive choice, but the, the size of having a program in it. And when you lose programming, then you also lose people. Because then folks who have an option, who have the ability to go to a different school to seek out whatever program they want.
Yeah.
We've seen that happen. And we've done these kind of reductions, um, reductions in services in our elementarys before. Not my tenure, but before my tenure that happened and people left. So we're not reducing services here. So I don't think there's going to be an egoist on that kind of thing. Um, but you're right. It is a culture thing that.
Well, potential, it's going to be paying out like later, right? So we're looking at like this year in this moment and like the next two to three to four years, like the impacts sort of on the, the other end could be costly too. And it's hard to predict that. So then you can't measure and predict.
Going back to the numbers, the problem is that Deerfield's gotten smaller with its residents coming to school here, you know, so we're going to school here. Um, I mean, so our population's gone down so that being able to, you know, it really would be a full section of school trips. You know, and unless you have, you know, major spread increments, it doesn't pay for itself in most cases.
And to your point, if we do collapse classrooms, there is no wiggle room for school choice, right? There's no wiggle room. And the numbers are precarious a little bit because if we have some move-ins, you know, eighteen isn't, I would say, you guys can pipe in. Eighteen is like a global class size, especially if we're keeping all of our instructional assistants. And, um, our goal is to ensure that there's at least an instructional assistant in every classroom looking preliminary at the numbers. If we collapse, um, all of these, we can do that. Um, I think my philosophy, your philosophy is, correct me if I'm wrong, is to keep them smaller in the younger grades collapsing fourth grade. I, I don't, into fifth grade. I, I don't see a potential, um, I don't see a huge negative impact to that. I do see that increasing some other social hopeiness in that class size by fourth grade. That's what I would say there in kindergarten or looking at sixteen, um, in each class size. It's just, are we adding school choice or no? That's where it gets a little bit trickier, I guess. But kindergarten having a class size of sixteen, I don't think is unreasonable.
We just shut the door in school choice then.
But then you have to shut the door in school choice. So that's what we were talking about. I'm like, whoa, what impact does that have?
Huge, right? I mean, from my perspective in terms of.
Yeah, I was just going to say like, um, it, I'm also kind of curious. I was trying to do a little bit of looking to see like what trends are in terms, I mean, I've heard that the, you know, that our, our population in Deerfield is going down, but and, um, you know, demographics are shifting, but I was, um, kind of curious about that, even, even stretching that out a little longer to see like, you know, because I can look at these numbers and yeah, there's the, there's a lower number of, uh, I, I guess I was just wondering because, you know, if you look at school choice in these numbers alone, it is actually increasing as they're getting younger, like it goes from four to seven to eight after it had dipped, dipped down. And I was just sort of wondering like what, what are the trends, you know, if you better all of like, are, can, is there a way to predict? I mean, I guess. Is there, of course, nobody, this, you know, it's like you need a big snowstorm and then you get a few kids, but, um, you know, in terms of like, um, but you know, just in terms of like, do we perceive that this is a trend that is, you know, that it's going, that they're.
So if you go to, um, page two of that report at the top, the enrollment data, you can see the school choice number from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty two. And we've gone from sixty seven to forty six, which forty six makes sense because twenty twenty was, you know, COVID impact, we bounced back up to fifty four, fifty six, um, but we are expecting to see that drop down. You know, I'm not sure we would hit fifty six, even if we kept the class sizes as they are. Um, the sixth grade number, I don't have the breakdown in front of me. What's the current sixth grade?
Nine.
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 Nine is a lot to replace in one year, as is, you know, the, the class that has thirteen and ten. It, it's hard to get that many.
And I'm also just, oh, sorry. I was just going to say also that the numbers from, uh, you know, obviously there's a big dip from nineteen and twenty to residents, but they are sort of, you know, in a lesser way, kind of climbing up a little bit.
Yep.
Again, whether that's something that's continuing, you know, if that's a trend that's continuing or it's going to level up. Yeah, I mean, I, I don't want to, I'm not trying to get into the weeds. I just wanted to sort of understand all the factors at play.
Yeah. And I don't think that there's a simple trend with school choice that bounces.
Yeah.
No, there's also we've been, we have been shrunk as a school because of school choice. So, you know, our indicators probably, um, if we accepted no school choice, you know, we would have shrunk along with the rest of the county that's shrinking, you know. Stay that kind of conscious fear that goes up to Frontier as well. Um, so will it pop back up? It could, you know, if we see a pre-k enrollments go through the roof next year and, you know, um, you know, that kind of thing, then you, you would have to be back, but they were going to have a teacher. And, you know, that kind of thing. And, you know, as Tina will tell you, it's not great having three, two, three, two, it causes a lot of disruption within the staffing because you've got every year, someone's going to be like, oh, you're going to teach a different grade, that kind of thing. But at the same time, I'm sure they also have more classes. I can't see their faces. So, but, so. But if, you know, we get an increasing role, then we'll have to roster as well.
I guess that's one. I mean, I don't know if it's time to talk about some of the details, but, um, like the fifth grade class size, I, I guess I'm wondering, you know, as I was starting to try to look at, okay, this next year, this fifth grade will be the sixth grade and fourth grade, you know, at does, it's in that same way of like doing the adjustments up and down, like why would you want to, you know, and saying this just as a curiosity question, why would you, why would it be a good idea to go from a fourth grade that's really full and then a three, it's a full three clap? You know, I'm looking at what it is right here, twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four. It's a full fourth grade and then having it reduced down to a two, two classes for fifth grade and then back up to a sixth grade that's full. Like, um, at least the numbers, unless I'm looking at this wrong, but you've got fifty five, then that's down to forty and then fifty five. If you reduce that fifth grade class to two classrooms, does that not then mean that you have to come back after the fourth graders become fifth graders and out of class?
Well, the sixth grade class has three and that's not going to change. So someone would have to shift down to fifth grade. Um, which you, we have more shifting right now than we would have. You know, if, if everybody was at two, you wouldn't have.
It's three, three, three now though, right? Is that what I'm looking?
No.
No, it's not. Yeah, it's two in kindergarten, three in first grade, two in second grade.
The fourth.
Yeah.
So.
I was just thinking of that jump and, and in particular.
You know, right. So when the fifth grade moves to sixth grade, okay, it's forty kids, then we would take the, the sixth grade teacher and make it a fifth grade teacher. I mean, general, I don't know the staffing. And so, and then there'd be only two sections in sixth grade.
Well, no, I guess I was saying if you keep it at, yes, it would still mean the two, but the thing is that at the moment it's three. So why not keep the three for those three grades as, just so that there isn't dropping down.
The, the kids wouldn't know the difference because they're in the same classes. Right? So if you have, I think the, the, that, once that fifth grade will forever be a two-section fifth grade. You intend to go the next to the third year, then split them into, split forty by three. Because that would.
Right, right. Just, sorry, I'm getting it. It's, it's getting confused because at the moment they are forty split into grades. So to keep them.
But we're doing that to reduce staffing.
No, I understand.
Okay, okay.
Perhaps you can tell us, I can not reduce staffing, but I'm trying to see if, you know.
I, if I, if I may, um, it, you know, this is, this is a difficult conversation we've been having for going on probably five or six years now. I think even before Darius started as superintendent, we were wrestling with the enrollment question, the reliance on school choice to fund so many positions in the school. And the looming decline in population, not just in our own community, but throughout this area of Western Massachusetts. I mean, if you look at virtually every school in Western Mass and correct. in Western Mass and correct me if I'm wrong, Darius, uh, or particularly in Franklin County and Northern Hampshire County. Enrollments have declined and are continuing to decline and the outlook isn't great right now. Back when we built the school you're sitting in, we were looking at uh, plans that called for an additional wing planning on this school for the expected population increase. And then we've gone in the exact opposite direction. Uh, we built a parking lot out out front of the school that was half the size it is now because we didn't have the employees we have now. Uh, the various programs and special needs uh, that have come up over the last fifteen years or, you know, or twenty years have really added costs. Um, but we're we're faced right now with a continued decline in in enrollment that's putting us in this difficult position. I certainly don't want to. You know, I I would love to avoid staffing changes. Um, but I've also been through enough town meetings and and been around town long enough to know that the reaction of our citizens and the town meeting is that when you, and and we're not there now, but when you were, when we were approaching twenty to thirty percent of the total student population coming from outside the community of Deerfield. Um, there was a lot of pushback and maybe that's why I'm as sensitive as I am to this whole issue. School choice has done tremendous good for the Deerfield Elementary School and for the Frontier Regional School District and the Union Thirty-Eight Schools. Um, but it's a double-edged sword. Uh, we can't, I can't um, picture a pleasant town meeting if you come in and aren't reacting in some way to reductions in um, enrollment uh, by looking at staffing, uh, because the townspeople don't want to see us have three classroom sections for, you know, forty, forty students through all six grades. And I understand the impact that this has on faculty morale, on culture, on the community. Uh, when you're you're moving from, you know, two teachers in one grade and to three in another and the need to shift teachers around. I I don't, it's it's a tremendously difficult um, decision that we we have before us. I think Shelley, Darius, Tina, and all of the administration have put together a very um, good summary here of what the options are to try and get down to the two and a half to three and a half percent. Um, and I think we can find a balance in here of staffing changes, S R funds, you know, using revolving funds, uh, school choice, et cetera, to try and balance things off. But we still end up in the same place that as the enrollments continue to stay down and our school choice numbers continue to erode, all of the money that we've been spending out of school choice has got to be transitioned back over to the general fund budget. Um, and that's a tough, tough road to hoe. And I think, you know, Shelley has given us some, you know, a a rudimentary map to to uh, help us make decisions, but somewhere we've got to make changes. It's not that we've been kicking the can down the road. We've been recognizing and trying to make changes over the last three or four or five years. Um, but we're now getting closer and closer to the point in time that the hard decisions will have to be made. So. I rambled on too long. And one last thing, I'm sorry, um, it's true that if we reduce three positions, for instance, in the general fund budget, uh, we will have to shift something out of uh, school choice into the general fund budget. We wouldn't get the full reduction in the schools budget of of three staff re- position reductions, but a portion of our benefits, mainly the insurance costs, um, health insurance costs for our teachers is carried by the town. Uh, not by the schools and that would be a reduction to the town budget that should also be considered or, you know, taken into consideration as we have the discussions, so. Anyways, I've I've rambled on long enough, sorry.
Laurie, I saw you raised your hand. I'm just gonna ask you to um, sit tight while we finish our conversation.
I did, I'm through everything unless I missed something.
So I'll tell you where you are at in your current set up of process. Your next meeting is the public hearing. And so, um, you have to either, you have to have a number to go forward to public hearing. Deerfield Town Meeting is, um, I'm just gonna give you the map of your, what you, I'm saying you have to do. Give you an idea. So, um, public hearing is currently set for the ninth of March. And Town Meeting is currently the twenty-fourth of April. We would have to give the town probably the budget. You're gonna have to give them an indicator of where they're at by the beginning of April. I mean, if you're fighting over small amounts, I mean, that'd be fine, but they will get Frontier's budget on the, by the eleventh of March. Um, so two days after your um, your public hearing on the budget, because the Deer, the Frontier budget is, we all know, is it does also affect, we have to play together with the Frontier budget. We don't know the assessments for Frontier because we're waiting for that from state.
When do they have to publish the warrant? And does it, does the published warrant have the budget numbers in it or do they still plan to work on it?
They have to publish the warrant two weeks prior.
Two weeks prior and it usually has the final budget numbers.
Rather reduce on town floor, I don't think you can increase.
That's correct. Once it, once it's published, you can go down, you can't go up.
So. You know, some of, um, you know, so anyway, that's your timeline. You you are welcome to, um, when you have your public hearing on the budget, doesn't mean you have to vote the budget. Okay, that's what you are, you're proposing that, you know, that you want to get feedback on. You really shouldn't increase it after the public hearing. I'm not sure if it's a law. Do you know if it's a law or not, Mary?
No.
Or it's just, no, good practice.
Practice to vote it. Listen to the public comment and then just go ahead and vote without, you know, time to consider their input.
Uh, but you want to give them an indicator at your public hearing about what you're doing. So I just want everybody to kind of know what the where you're at right now, so.
I'm wondering, you can't, I mean, you can't factor in, you alluded to school choice, what that adds to the culture, because I've always heard that over the years, that, you know, our our school choice, students and families have always added a lot, um, particularly since we have such a decrease in population. But one thing that we could talk about is what what do we feel as a committee is your ideal class size? What are what are we looking for? How big or small? Is it different for the younger kids or the older kids? What class size are we aspiring to?
Yeah, I was gonna, I was just sort of gonna ask too, you know, when we talk about the potential chain, you know, you you have a paragraph in here about talking about how the 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 decisions will have a change to the culture, future trajectory, et cetera. Um, and, you know, that's uh, and and so in in that same sort of vein, like really kind of wanting to know what is your, what's your vision for this cul- that culture? What do you, what do you want? What I dealing with be the way forward? Um, I I don't want to take away from your question, Mary, but I was thinking might be.
Same, along the same lines.
Was that?
You had said something in one of our meetings that pre-COVID, the class sizes were not as small as some of our class sizes now.
That is absolutely true. Pre-COVID, we never had class sizes of fourteen. Please somebody correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, there, right, like, we've never seen these sizes and I think that, um, you know, for like, we've had that size and we've seen what we can do with classes that are that size. Um, to your point, you know, like, how is it impacting our students? We have one grade level that, you know, I still see that we're in particular that I still see that we're experiencing COVID. That is not a grade level we're even moving on touching. Me personally, I I, you know, I think that a class size from four to six of eighteen is not a a large class. When I first came here, I think our class sizes were around eighteen and nineteen. We had one class that was around twenty-one. Now we're factoring into the COVID stuff and when are we gonna kind of get over that? I think the twenty in kindergarten is a little bit much. I think the sixteen is a pretty good number for kindergarten. Sixteen to eighteen, I think you're pushing the high end. And that is, I just want to throw out there with an instructional assistant in the classroom as well. Like, I think that if you're gonna increase class sizes, we've, I will argue that we're relatively thin on IAs. I think Mary would argue even um, louder that we are relatively thin on IAs. I think we do a, um, they are fabulous and I think we do a super job with a few of them.
So something Mary just, and maybe I'm misinterpreting what she's saying, but like, is it possible that it makes sense to have, you know, three sections up to second grade and then drop down to two? Or is that just sort of asking for, so you're not necessarily flip-flopping per class all the way through? But in the younger grades, like there's guaranteed smaller class sizes and then as they get older and it's better for a variety of reasons that it's, you know, it's two from second grade or third grade on, or is that also kind of logistically too challenging?
Think that it depends on the makeup of the classes as well and how many kids are in there and we can't really account for who's gonna move in, who's not gonna move in. And so at some point you might get to a like, oh no, now we have twenty-one in a class because we're trying to to consolidate. We can't, they're moving targets, the numbers are for the kids with with enrollments. They really are, like, we have some that move in and some that move out. Um, if we could predict it like that, I think we probably would have. Because doing like the three, two, three, three, two, two, it's not funny that, yeah.
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 I hear what you're saying and it it does make sense for if you look at next year's third grade class of twenty-nine, as they go through. So there's always gonna be some chomping around.
And let's say, so let's say, where's Kate's demeanor goes and we predict her numbers all wrong. So let's look at the K number and right now we said it's at thirty-two. Tina said, oh, we could have, you know, four more than that. And so now that puts us at thirty-six and then let's say she's way off and we get, we get, you know, forty-two. But then, you know, that's gonna, you know, we would have to, we'd have to adjust, come back here and say, we're gonna have to use school choice money. We didn't offer it to, and this is gonna be a larger cost than, than, you know, than we can handle. I think just knowing that you, we do have the ability to adjust, just like, you know, you, we save money here, we could have, um, we get a student with high needs coming to the district and, you know, you can, you can have one stick, one student with some level, high levels of disability where it could be a hundred thousand dollars. And it could change your, all your, you know, everything that we've done, that kind of thing. So I think we're constantly, while we have to make decisions, they're not, they're in stone for that budget, but they're not in stone for the school in the sense of like, oh, you're just gonna have to have twenty-four. You know, that's, you know, that's something that.
And the kindergarten number is always one that comes up. So if we're gonna collapse and have two kindergarten classrooms, we're not gonna have school choice. If you want three kindergarten classrooms and smaller numbers, then we're gonna have to have school choice and you'd have about ten, nine or ten. So that's a number.
But once you let the school choice in, they get to stack.
So then you're not gonna, yeah, when you go up, they're not gonna shift that.
And one of the things that's confusing, but it's hard to really um, grasp the impact of school choice in that it seems like it does, but like you said, it's, there are pros and cons, you wrote in here, shall I? Um, that it, on the one hand, uh, it it it's increased, it it seems like there's an imbalance in the amount of, um, the way it, um, the expenses and the and the income don't quite match. I guess, is maybe the best way to say, it seems like you, there's less money coming in than is spent, or is it, is it correlated that way? I'm not sure, like, I I guess when you were saying, you know, because I was looking at, it's like, okay, well, um, you know, as I looked at the numbers and you you're doing the comparison between, where are they? Where before the class size, or maybe this is, maybe this is not the factor that I'm thinking it is, but before class size position uh, or reduction, you, we were spending more than, you know, the expenses are way out, you know, it's like seven, seventy thousand or so and then it's less after, after the uh, uh, class size is reduced. Um, like we, we end up with a bigger number left in reserve.
Well, that's because we moved with this assumption in that chart. It's moving one teacher off of school choice onto budget in exchange for that money that we're freeing up from one of the positions being eliminated. So if we had to keep that position in here, we would be um, at the nine, nine thirty-four.
Okay. And then.
But.
And you brought up a good question and Annie actually asked me that offline, the same question is what's the cost of a school choice student? And, you know, compared on what the money we we get on that. And that's an impossible number because each student individually is different. So, and I use the example, if a student, school choice student is in Tina's office every day. Um, and, you know, and also, you know, needs additional support, there's no billable unless it's a student, especially a new student. And even if Tina's office, Tina's bill hour isn't, isn't applied at all there. So, and that goes across the board. The only thing that we're able to add to the bill on that student is services. So all the little things that they they bring, and they bring positives to the classroom too, you know. Um, you know, even on the positive side, you have a school choice student who's advanced and teacher has to do extension lessons in order to meet the child's needs. There's no way of, you know, recognizing, you know, about putting that within the budget. You know, so, and then the school choice kid is the best friend of your child. There's no way to put a number on that. But, so it is kind of hard when people, the idea really is that if you have, you know, fourteen students in a class and you add four more, it really should be the same class around the class, but it's not.
But I do think it's a really important clarification that you make because I think sometimes, and we can talk about town meeting in a variety of ways, but I think there's not an understanding that like school choice does offset our budget and like, if someone requires real specialty services, it's not just our district giving it away for free. You know, I think that sometimes that gets lost in translation. So I think it's important to say that again here in a public platform. And then also at a town meeting, when that is shared that, um, it is a double-edged sword, but it's also if someone requires specialty services, we're not just giving it out, the other district is helping to offset those costs.
But the town's also paying for kids that go out of district as well. So we'll argue that they don't, we should have school choice. Not only is it the kids coming in here that we're paying for, it's also the kids who choose to go out. The town has to pay that bill. We don't see the impact of that because it doesn't hit our budget, but the town sees the impact.
And, and the perception is out there that, you know, if we've got a sixteen thousand five hundred dollar cost per student on average in the budget, I'm just taking a number off the top of my head. But we're only getting five thousand for a student that comes in from out of town, you know, we're, we're losing the the perception in the public, the general public, to go to Annie's point, is that we're losing money on the deal. Um, what's not understood is that the school choice program has paid for initially. And school choice helps us with that and continues to help us with that. You know, so it's, it's, it's really, it's, it's just, it's, it's a tough one to wrestle with. And we've, you know, I think what we need to do tonight is give our administrative team a sense as to what, where you want to end up in terms of an overall increase, or, you know, the proposed budget increase, and how you want to get, go about getting to that stage. If you want to go in at five and a quarter percent where it sits now, you can, you can try doing that, or, you know. We should make a decision and try and come to a consensus for them, so that they have a little more direction this time around going into our next meeting. This is not, you know, as, as Shelley and Darius have both said, and Tina, and everyone, I think, in this, in the room and at this table, at the table there, this is not a decision anyone wants to make, or has, you know, wants to make. And I hate budgeting time of year, because it always comes down to talking about percentages and dollars, and what we're dealing with is the education of our children in the community and the dedication and, you know, well, you know, the dedication and professionalism of the people on our staff and faculty that, that support the education of the kids. And, you know, there's no easy way to do it. So anyways. I apologize.
Thanks, Ken. At the, um, March ninth hearing, in theory, so we'll present one of these, or we'll, we'll give an idea of what direction we're headed in, maybe by the end of tonight. And at that point, we may hear from, like, teachers and.
So basically, a public hearing basically is that it is a open to the public to discuss the budget.
Gotcha.
And we will invite the select board and the finance committee to come, and they usually send a member or two. And they will talk about how that, those numbers are going to affect their budget. And at that time, they, they will have the state's members, so they will kind of give their kind of feedback there. That's usually, yeah, like ninety-nine percent of the time, it's just other government bodies, but anybody can come in. And then we close the public hearing, and then we have a school committee. And so, and then at that time, sometimes, as, you know, we have voted the budget at that public hearing, right after the public hearing, and as Mary kind of said, sometimes it's bad taste in his mouth, because you didn't really listen. Were you even sure that you were going to listen, because you, you scheduled a vote immediately following? And that, sometimes it doesn't matter when they, if we're coming in at two and a half and not cutting anything, and everybody's happy, yeah, we're going to vote right after it, because there's nothing. This particular one, we probably, we're going to want to do another date where we're going, we're going to actually vote the budget, have another meeting on the calendar. And, you know, meeting on the calendar would be, you know, again, with just this being the agenda item, that kind of thing. But I'm just kind of giving you the overview of what the hearing looks like.
Yeah, because you, this is your first, this is your first budget cycle.
And we haven't, and we've been fortunate that we haven't had, we haven't had controversial budgets recently. So, at least we, so, you know, the public hearing, you don't have people coming in. Only one way or another, that kind of, different ideas and such.
But once we go into that, it's not likely we would go up.
You shouldn't, you shouldn't, and we were just kind of saying, it would be, you, you increase it afterwards. You should come in higher, and if you're going to reduce, you know, so.
So it wouldn't necessarily be a question to come in at five or less based on maybe some of these other things we could knock off to have that sort of more public input and then make the decision? Like, that would be versus going in at, like, trying to get it as low as possible straight out the gate without.
And you do, you guys also have another curve ball with you, is that you do have S R money.
Right.
So you can, you can, you could do a combination where you can backfill with S R money. And after maybe it's more complicated, and I probably am going to, so you can just kick me. But you could technically say.
Tell me first what you're going to say.
Move your, mute your mics.
But I'm trying to say is that you have the, you have enough S R money where you could say that we are going to reduce two of the, we just give an example, not as a suggestion. But you could reduce two, but you're very concerned about the K numbers being uncertain, in that we're going to use S R money to fill the K slot. If the K slot does not fill, we can undo S R and put that money, take it off of school choice within the budget, right? So you can give yourself a, you, you have that extra money that most, you're fortunate, because it gives you, it's double-edged, because it makes you more decisions, but it also gives you greater protection within the budget.
One, one question about the S R money, as I understand it, it has to be spent by September of twenty-four, which puts it into fiscal, September twenty-four, which puts it into fiscal twenty-five. You, you have the potential to spend some funds in fiscal twenty-five early on. So I, that's what I was trying to piece together. You know, sort of, if I may, Darius, I, I would like to say that as I read through Shelley's summary and the options that she was presenting, I think that the ability to, to use S R, we've got a two-year window here to make some changes with some funds that won't be available in the future, and hopefully help us begin the shift from school choice of some expenses back into the general fund while potentially addressing, while potentially addressing possible reductions in staff that are necessary. So I, I like the phased approach of possibly eliminating two positions for next year, and if, if necessary, a third one the year after, but to use S R funds, elimination of two positions, and this is one person talking, it's just where I stand. And approaching it from that angle, I don't think you want to go in with five and a quarter percent to a town meeting that's just voted a twelve million dollar library building that people have absorbed pretty hefty tax increases and are facing, you know, more capital expenditures on the horizon. But, you know, it's, it's a committee call, and I will support whatever the committee decides. I just, there, there are issues outside of the school community that come to, come to visit us on town meeting floor. You know, some of you have seen that, others, others of us are new enough on the committee that may not have experienced it in the past, so. I'd like to see us below five and a quarter percent. I'd like us to consider a phased-in approach on the staffing issue. It's not because I want to eliminate staff, it's because there are financial realities out there, and we've got to find a way to wrestle through them, or we're really going to be faced a couple of years down the line with major issues, so.
I would agree with Ken. I, I am not in favor of all three positions in one year. But also, you know, when I look at it, you've already reduced the budget twice, really. You took out the two positions that we were hoping for, came down to seven, now we've come down to five. And I'm never in favor of cutting our own budget before anybody's even seen it, like, why would we do that? Except, when you look at the enrollment numbers, because the data says we have to do, we have to do a little bit more. So I would agree, I'd agree with Ken.
I think one of the wiggle room that you're going to have to look at when talking with the town is how much S R money to use. And I also want to make sure people know who are watching that S R money is being spent on other things as well. We're just talking about, so they can use what we're spending S R money on, just so I don't want them to.
Summer programming, so staffing for summer programming, a big chunk for our equity work that we're doing for the audit and the equity consultants curriculum. We're going to be putting out new curriculum next year, so there's material purchases.
We did just get another grant on that, by the way. I'm not sure that information, as soon as that's finalized.
And then stipends for curriculum development.
So I'm just saying, I just want to be like, oh, you saved all the S R money that was supposed to help with it. We are spending on other things as well, and just want to make sure that that's up there as well. But we can, we're going to meet with the town, and town, I'm sorry, let me just, one thought. The three-point-two-six is, is also, is, is pretty high for what, you know.
Right.
The town also be, when I say the town, the select board and finance committee might be asking for us to ignore that. And then that, we may have to massage to me how much S R money we do to reduce that or not, you know, that kind of thing. And we also have to see where frontier comes in with this assessment as well, and how that works with. Because I would, it's a whole nother kind of, we're talking about town politics and such. I would say that school choice has saved the town for two and a half override, because it hasn't done one in, when's the last time town sent a two and a half? And, and technically, you should be doing an override every so often to adjust, because you can't, if, if you're going to have contracts and whatnot that are above two and a half percent, you can't, the money's got to come from somewhere else that you're taking care of things. I would say that school choice has prevented a two and a half override. One could argue that, let's just put it that way. And so, so I don't know who wants to argue with me about that, but I just, it's one of those things where I think that your two and a half should be happening every ten years, because you need to be adjusting your budgets to the proper amount of.
So I think at this point, we're at a, at a moment where school committee has to decide, like Annie suggested, do we go to public hearing with five point two-five percent? Basically, I'll do the whole spiel beginning to end, so everybody hears what we've done, the work we've done that Mary mentioned, and we get feedback about the five point two-five and the enrollment changes. And then there's a separate school committee meeting to discuss how to proceed following receipt of that input. Or are you ready to charge us with cut another percent off, cut another percent and a half off before public hearing? And let's present lower than five point two-five.
And I only want to throw one there, if you're going to reduce staff, you got to say that you go to the public hearing effect, because you reduce staff, not at the public hearing, and then reduce it later. I mean, I know there's a lot of people watching, so, but, but really, you have to say that this is our intent. I think you have to say that.
And I only want to throw one there, if you're going to reduce staff, you got to say that you go to the public hearing effect, because you reduce staff, not at the public hearing, and then reduce it later. I mean, I know there's a lot of people watching, so, but, but really, you have to say that this is our intent. I think you have to say that. And I only want to throw one there, if you're going to reduce staff, you got to say that you go to the public hearing effect, because you reduce staff, not at the public hearing, and then reduce it later. I mean, I know there's a lot of people watching, so, but, but really, you have to say that this is our intent. I think you have to say that. I was, sorry, I was going to, I was going to, when you were talking about S R, I remember in the past, you talked about the fact that that is, you know, it's a single pot of money, a single, it's not something that will, especially now, I'm surprised it's still around, that it's not something to rely on for the future. And I guess I'm just, I suppose, wondering, you know, why, like, one, I mean, you've already said, I'm not wondering, but like, how it will be a good idea to use it? And it sounds like just in case you need it, and we're not completely, like.
No, and that's why we haven't put salaries like this on it, and we use part of it. Part of S R one, we did use for salaries in the first year we received to offset early childhood and school lunch that had significant reductions in revenue. Those have bounced back up, so we pulled some of those wages back off. That was the only time, and it wasn't for teaching positions, it was, or, or early childhood, it covered some IAs. But we had never intended to use S R two or S R three to help offset the budget. There are districts that have done that across the state, and they're in really difficult positions. They've put hundreds of thousands of dollars, because they got millions of S R. So we've tried to avoid that and use it for other needs, COVID and, and not COVID-related.
And understanding the bigger politics of things, that some districts are using that as a gap to SOA money, Student Opportunity Act money that is coming to some, SOA money is not coming to us. Okay, we're not going to get, we're not going to get much at all. We get chapter seventy funding, we get the thirty, we get the sixty dollars per student kind of thing. So there's no SOA money coming our way. So when I talk about they fully funded SOA, it did not help our district at all, or seventy percent of the state for that matter. Seventy percent of the districts, that's important, because the twenty district does help, is the majority of the population, is the, is the majority of the state. And, you know, the millionaire's tax, I was just at a, a conference on this, and so the millionaire's tax is not going to help us either. So don't be holding your breath that that's going to all of a sudden send waves of cash that's going to offset things.
No.
By the time they get that through, you're going to see very little, so.
So one other thing with S R, Erica, is while we've tried not to use it for salaries and wages, we are at a point where we are in a bit of a fiscal pinch, right? And so we have the money there, we can shift our spending efforts, use it while we have it, because if we don't spend it, we lose it, we give it back. If we were not in this position, we would put more P D on it, we would put more curriculum materials. The cost of rollout the new initiatives next year, district-wide, is significant, like hundreds of thousands of dollars. And as Darius said, Laura has been doing a ton of work to write grants to try to get money, knowing that we're having this conversation about S R funds, not just at Deerfield, at other districts, about offsetting budgetless hours and wages. So we're trying to come up with other plans to pay for the curriculum material. So I don't want to give the impression that, you know, this money would get wasted if we didn't need it for this, but we're, we're in a position where we can use it and then find other resources for some of the other things. You know, I don't, we don't know yet what's happening with continuation of the equity work in the new year. I know that their administration's in conversation about that, but we don't have a pot to pay that from without S R funds. It's not part of our budget. So, you know, we, we need this S R money, and we have to strike the balance of budget support and all of those other pieces. And we're lucky we haven't had to do that yet. I feel fortunate that we've found a way through the last several years.
Well, and then, that's, that's a tribute, Shelley, to your foresight and Darius's foresight in managing the shift through these rough waters. The, the planning and thought that you, the two of you and the, and the, and Tina and the entire administrative team have put into not just, well, into the financial management of district and Deerfield Elementary School, so that we're not faced yet with having hard discussions about cuts in services, among other things. So I, I can't thank you enough for your, you know, thank the team enough for their, for their efforts in that respect, so.
I have a question about something Mary said about, like, a phased approach, just to, you know, not losing all three positions at the same time, but like, really thinking about if it was a phased approach, like, what would make the most sense in terms of what, you know? And that's a hard question, because you're sort of, but like, in terms of the needs.
Right, so I don't think that we'd make that decision here and now. We would, you would say, we would like to develop a phased approach. We would go back, now we have Tina time to also have conversations and that kind of stuff. Okay, these are the things, the moving pieces we're playing with, let's, let's kind of work this out. And then we would bring that back. So I'd say, I'd say you'd ask us to, we summarize when I'm hearing. We'd let's see a phased approach, and we'd like the percentage of the budget to be at blank, you know, three point two-five, okay? We will go back, create a phased approach, and Shelley will tell you how we can get to different options of getting to that, and that would be the budget here. And then, so we could, we would present the three point two-five at a budget hearing, this is the phased approach. You can then adjust it at that point, say, we don't like your phased approach, you can do a second, but that would be, at least give us a snapshot in time. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I also, I know we keep talking about town meeting, it's, I would not say it's representative of the entire town, and I know that's who ends up making decisions about the final budget and stuff, but, I do think it has been an exceptional time in education the last three years, so I don't think it's on. So I don't think it's unreasonable to be higher than two point five percent, given all that has occurred. And I, I believe that the community wants the best for our children as we sort of come out of this. Um, so I, I really like Mary's idea of like a phased approach, knowing that we're gonna probably be. I'm comfortable with being a little higher in percent, and maybe that's because I'm newer, but I also know that it has been such an exceptional three years. And I think it's reasonable to make decisions that are still in the best interest of the social, emotional wellbeing and academic wellbeing of kids. And if that means, you know, not cutting three positions right away, and really taking a phased approach and. Getting the lay of the land about what it's like to educate post pandemic. I think that's reasonable and maybe. I, um, am an optimist, but I feel like a lot of our community members would understand that and want the same for the kids in our school too.
Wait, so. I agree. And the process that happens after our, our public meeting. Is the town's gonna, I say this again, the select, the finance committee and select board are gonna say how much money the town has. So they have whatever their revenues are this year, and we don't, that's the part where we're kind of in a vacuum, where we don't have that number. And they don't have that number. And so they're gonna say, our growth is four hundred thousand dollars, okay? You wanna take, between us and frontier, you're gonna wanna take two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you know? You know, the rest of the town budget doesn't fit. So that's, that's the game that, that happens next. And just kind of so people can understand, some years it fits fine, like. We can make that without a problem, and, you know, we're gonna use this and then. And then, or, and you sometimes you have to go over the town, sometimes, as you said, the town people, I think they're gonna back this, if that's what you're, you're hearing out there.
Or if that's part of our messaging as the school committee is to do community outreach or.
And you can, so, but the problem is the money's the money. If you don't, if you go above that, then they have to do two and a half. And then that goes to a ballot. So you can do it on time and for, and then ask what about, just kinda know how, how it kind of plays out for the down road. So you better. So if it gets to that point, we, yeah, and I'm just kinda telling people know what the different stages are, because it's, it's like, how is the, what happens if you say? You want a higher number and you think the towns are behind it, you know, and we just will validate. It's very different.
So, uh, reducing by two positions will save us almost two percent. So we would be going into a public hearing around three point two five. If that's the direction the committee wants to go in. The third position, uh, we would maintain. But as Ken said, to help offset school choice and start to bring down those expenses, we would use Esser funds. To cover some school choice costs for a year, so that we can start to. Build our reserves back up and, and tackle that.
And what would cutting one position?
Uh, it would be about one percent.
It would only be one percent, so it would only bring it down to four point two five.
As Shelley says, think of it in terms of fifty one thousand dollars as a percent. So.
Oh, I know. I had a question before and I forgot it, and now I remember. It was of how, um, the. I guess, I guess it's the next item on the thing, which is about the school choice question. And how I, in a way, it feels like we're trying, as you said, we're, we're, we're not flying blind, but just that there's. There are variables out there that we don't know yet, and so we're having to act on it ahead of, ahead of them. And so I guess that's one of the things. It's like, how is. How is this school choice question going to affect this?
Well, we have to vote on being a school choice school. Technically, that's the vote, right? And then there could be additional discussion about number of students down the road.
So. We can go into that, cause it is part of the discussion of.
Because I didn't know where we're gonna land. I have two charts. One is school choice, if everything remains the same. And one is what I would recommend for school choice, if, if the highlighted ones are if those were the classrooms that. I don't, it's a little tricky, particularly when it comes to kindergarten, because if we're not gonna. Our number is at that point of. Or do we have three? And so sometimes we hold on to the position and we see what the involvement looks like and then decide to add school choice. That's happened before. Sometimes we just go with the two. I don't know where we're landing.
So what, so the, you would vote so it could be a school choice school, so. You know, and then from there, Tina would basically be in a frozen pattern, any, any grades that are. She's not gonna add any school choice to the, to the grades that we're discussing, but if she gets a, um. A third grader, next year, third grader, you know, you know, just the fourteen and fifteen class. Certainly, we could accept that and get those families situated to come. But right now, like the rest of the lineup is probably frozen.
Do we have, yeah, do you have school choice siblings? Any incoming kindergarten siblings?
I'm looking to that. I just looked at the number that we had, so that's a good question.
Um, but again, so if we do plus and minus for every single grade, and the reason why we did, well, uh, no. Equal to or greater than one, uh, because what that allows us to do, if you close a grade level and a student moves out of district. In the middle of the year, we allow them to stay school choice. So that's not destructive to the child. If you didn't do that, the child would have to leave. So that's, it's really a safeguard. That's why it says equal plus one in all of them, because we had that happen. So we fixed that.
The three pending applications and incoming fifth grade. It's a, damn, I don't think it will be that's a fairly easy numbers wise change, mate.
Uh, what do you mean by that?
Forty students currently in fifth grade, up in, incoming fifth grade, and thinking like you do two sections of twenty. Right, that, like, you know, it's like numbers wise, that would make sense, but if you're looking at three incoming.
Take any school choice, they would close them.
Right, yeah.
Which that's a scenario where it makes sense to not take school choice, because it will cost us more. To run the third section than the fifteen thousand we're bringing in. As the sections stand currently, we're not in that position. It's not costing us anymore because our resident students are helping. Make up the composition of the class.
And how, as of now, pending applications, how much more of that as we, as we get?
Not much. This is about the heavy time that we get their applications in. Most school districts makes decisions around April, so. Maybe we'll get somewhat until then, but not much.
So if, let's, let's say we think about this phased approach. So somehow keeping a kindergarten teacher, for example, then would we consider something different in terms of those six pending applications?
That's a question for.
Yes. So that would be part of what you guys would be considering as we send you back with that chart.
And the decision on what classroom reduces might not even change in. Alignment with the budget. Like, we can make a decision to reduce the budget to X, which means we're reducing sections and reducing staffing. But what grade level actually reduces might have to wait until kindergarten enrollment is finalized.
Right.
So we know what we have to do, but we can make a decision down the road. Obviously, we wanna give any staff that are impacted by it enough time to do what they need to do on their end to. Find other employment if we're talking about letting a person go. Ideally, you know. If we could have it happen where there's no bodies impacted, we do have a couple of people on LOA that they have till May fifteenth. On their on leave of absences to let us know if they're coming back. If they didn't come back, then you're not talking about actually letting someone go. Or a resignation that we don't know about yet.
Yeah, I guess I just, I do feel like we don't want to, um. We don't wanna make whatever decisions are decided, the hardship on, you know. Minimize the hardship on anyone who's affected by this. Like, we don't wanna waffle on this and keep people in limbo and then whatever. But, but at the same time, if, if it makes sense to do a phase. You know, to be able to, to get some more, you know, the feedback from, from, um. You know, the, the, the town to do the hearing to get some, some of that and, um, be able to. Know that, uh, we were all, I mean, but, you know, that, that there is that, um, feeling of. Sorry, my brain just split. But, um, I. Yeah, sorry.
Also, though, you know, that school, so I would recommend that you vote, you change the. Teams, you know, both be a school choice school with the recommendation of placement for Tina to freeze the classes in. Freeze classes until we have more information. So I would suggest you vote that tonight. Also note that we've moved the vote up. Usually, so you're saying about, you know, timing with families, we usually don't vote school choice until April. Um, we'd ask to move it up because we've noticed that a lot of other schools are letting people know earlier, so we're trying to be in that. But if families have to wait. They're gonna have to wait. And so what they, you know, if they go on school choice, is you could say you're going somewhere and then withdraw and go somewhere else. So they can hedge their. It's not like, um, you know, not like colleges where you can choose one, you can't just withdraw. You, you can actually play, and families have played that game. Um, so.
That does happen, even though we have six pending applications, we may only get three. So last year, we actually accepted twelve and had to dump none, so.
So this just allows us to, we're doing all the districts, um, earlier, just so that, you know, if we can lock people in earlier. But if the reality is, you know, they're going, looking at, but say the fifth grade, and that's the reality, then we have to have a conversation that it doesn't look. That families know that, but we'll let you know if it changes.
I would be open to you guys coming up with a phased approach. That includes using Esser funds, because that seems like it could be a really helpful way. And a tool for us to be flexible with how this happens. At three point two five percent. That's, that's what I would propose. And then I am very much looking forward to hearing from the community at the public hearing. Before a final vote, because for me personally, that's like a big piece of the puzzle that's missing.
So can I clarify, just to make sure that I understand what, um, and the whole committee, I guess, would have to agree on it anyway. But when you say a phased approach and using Esser funds, are you saying using Esser funds? To offset the budget? And keeping classes as they are, or are you saying reducing size and staffing?
A combination of both, I think, because of not cutting all three at once, but as Mary had suggested, a phased approach. Based on a discussion that you all sort of maybe have, but also not. Hanging on to the Esser funds, because I think this is the, that kind of time where you would use them to, to sort of have a flexible approach. To keeping services as level as possible in a post pandemic time. Like, that makes a lot of sense to me, but I also recognize. We're in a huge crunch, and a combination of both of those things might be a good option.
Yeah, as I understand it, this is level services funded right now, correct? And even with the changes we're discussing, your, your services are still level funded. It's, it's, it's a, it's more staffing related than service related. So the, I, I think it's important to note that and, and let people know that we're not talking about reducing the services. That the Deerfield Elementary School provides. We're talking about student teacher ratios. Um, and, you know, it's a, it's a great, I just, you know, I, I don't want you to think in that. What's being talked about here is a reduction in services. We're not talking about cutting music, we're not talking about PE, we're not talking about. Any of the extra programs that are in the school presently, or any of the programs that are in the school being cut. We're talking about wrestling with enrollment decline and how to adequately properly staff for the future, so.
And closing out school choice. I mean, that's huge. And I think that, that's, that to me is the biggest impact. Um, that we're gonna, that's, that's huge. But I think a phased approach makes sense, and it gives time to figure out, like, maybe through attrition or other means. Where that might happen with the least impact to staff as well.
I guess I wouldn't mind throwing that question, or just getting the feedback. There's a phased approach. Does that, um. I know you've come with the proposal of, you know, recommending the, the proposal for the, for those. A specific proposal, but it does, does doing a phased approach, how does that sit for, for you? Does that just make things really? Doable?
And I think we came, we came up with a phased approach. We said two or three, right?
Right, because, yeah, we have our thoughts, but as, as everyone's saying, and I want to acknowledge that too. You've done a whole lot of work to get this to this point, so we don't wanna just derail what you're trying to do. Would love to have some of that flexibility if there is any.
Yeah, the phased approach just prolongs the process of how many years we have to continue to have conversations like this. You know, we could take the, could take the, rip the Band-Aid off, let's do it all in one year. And then we have to tackle, we still have the school choice issue, we still have the pre-K revolving issue, but general fund is taken care of all at once. So, you know, how do we wanna manage that? Cause it's not a one year conversation.
And Shelley, would the Esser funds be what you proposed, or you'll take a look at that again? Um, we talked about where the IA wage increase of fifty two thousand and then a hundred and one for transportation.
Yeah, I think we would look at it again. I, I think if we were, if we were talking about school committee was okay consolidating two grade levels. So eliminating two positions, we would look at offsetting that third position with Esser funds. Um, and sort of taking that, um, what's written on there off the table. So it would be about, um, could be around eighty five thousand or so. Um, and basically, we would be offsetting school choice. To bring our choice expenses down.
But in theory, between now and a year, when we have to go, when we're going through this process again, that's like a whole nother year of information and data. About like how kids are doing, how this all worked out, and maybe through attrition that, that position wasn't necessarily. Work, doesn't work out or isn't filled anyway. So I feel like that feels like a better bet to gather data for us.
Another year's representation about what younger incoming classes.
Right.
I would also, I would like to be lower than five, two, five percent. What would be comfortable with three and quarter age proposal?
So the next time school committee sees the budget will be at public hearing. With a goal of three point two five-ish percent. Just wanted to make sure. I have that clear?
Just thank you all for such hard work.
Lot of work.
So do you have the, we talked about the school choice.
I liked your motion language, Darius. Could you read it again?
You know, to basically approve school, to be a school choice school. And following the.
Freezing enrollment, or freezing, um, acceptance right now, right?
Freezing acceptance in grades that are, um, under consideration for. Freezing acceptance in grades that are, um, under consideration for a combination of classes. We, yeah, not combination.
Just remaining a school choice school and freeze. Were those grade levels under consideration? Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody like to make that motion?
I would make the motion to, um, participate in school choice for the fiscal 2024 school year as recommended by administration.
Alright, I'll take a roll call vote. Ken?
Yes?
Mary? Mary, yes. Erica?
Yeah.
Alright, um, next up on the agenda, we have, um, goal setting for committee, which could be rolled together with the energy committee discussion.
Sure.
I would just like to find out a potential hour mark.
Yes.
So perhaps a brief conversation. Any further thoughts on the goal setting aspect of it?
I mean, only, only in the, you know, uh, very briefly, just to say that, like, the idea of, um, you know, if we are able to, you know, have this phase, part, part of what we were talking about, being able to gather more data, um, and to be able to have a, um, you know, use some of that, uh, the time in the next year to be able to clarify some of, some of the overarching goals for the committee of, in terms of what our, um, you know, mission or, you know, what our sights are for how we want to, um, be most effective in aiding the administration, um, towards, uh, you know, their effective governance is really it. I've just, um, in general, wanted to be able to spend time this year, you know, kind of discussing that. Like I said, we've, we've been here for two hours and we, we, we don't need to do that now. But, um, but, uh, I think that this conversation we should just be continuing. And then, you know, as we, as the audit comes in and we get information there and, and looking at enrollment status and trends and things like that. So maybe we can do some, uh, some of that analysis, talking about the energy, you know, and things. Just so we get a sort of global overarching picture of, um, of what, uh, of the, the, how every, how everything, including the budget plays into, you know, what we're kind of accomplish as a community.
So continue keeping assessment agenda item.
Yeah, and as it comes up and, yeah, when we have more time, you know, when we're not pressed for time.
Yeah, and I think just, so I met with the energy committee, two members of the energy committee about two weeks ago. Um, and I think this fits into the sort of like, what is the larger goal? And like, how do we interact with other entities within the community to best support the school? But also like advocate for the things that we need and just like get messaging out. Cause I feel like there's so many different things going on in different parts of town government. But not always like talking to each other until we like, all of a sudden we're in a public hearing or like someone's talking at town meeting. So in terms of energy committee, they're very interested in supporting our efforts, especially with some repairs and replacements coming up for that H, not the HB, no, the HVAC, the AC unit in the school. Um, and so they, they have some resources and grants and, you know, they do a lot of work. And it could be really good for us to collaborate with them as we look ahead. And Darius had mentioned possibly having like a subcommittee about capital improvements. In which case that, to me, it seems like a perfect opportunity, invite people like the energy committee, maybe a facilities person to sort of like bring them the most concise information to this kind of a meeting with all the background information. So it doesn't feel disjointed. And I don't, I'm not saying that that's how it's been presented now, but it just feels a little more like a community collaboration. So I think that fits into some of those, like, how do we operate on like a higher level? And interact with other community entities. Um, but long story short is they want to help us. So when we talk about it next, they will, you know, we can sort of invite them in.
Any further discussion? Okay, we can move on to reports. Uh, no reports in the chair. They're collaborative report?
Not, nothing major from the collaborative. They just, they're really making big moves on some of their capital projects. They're, they just invested about $650,000 into their main building. And they're, they're gearing up the next fiscal year to do a $3.5 million update to their Heck Academy building, which is grotesquely in need of some updates. But I think obviously as a participating member, that's a big chunk of change and feel like it's important to be aware of. So that's just in the infancy stages though, but those were the like, kind of being pieces to take away from the last meeting.
Thank you. Superintendent's report.
The, uh, CMSI equity audit is coming, um, the 20th, 21st and 22nd of March. And I believe you guys though, received an email from Jen, you want to do an interview. On one of those days, you know, also the service support on the next week's, um, early March. So it's kind of rolling. It's going to kind of, right now they're already collecting data from us and supporting support. That's the latest part of where, um, if you can't make the timeframe. And Jen, you can also look at the public care. The public, um, will be open time, but it'll be with, you know, parents and such. It can be, shut up as a parent if you want, or they don't, they don't care, they don't really care when. If we're organizing different things, you get different people, but if, you know, your system doesn't work, just contact me. Um, we can achieve in different spots there. I just want to make sure if you want to meet with them, they get to. The superintendency agreement committee, um, we have a draft. It is with the attorney. Right now, and I actually talked to him today about it. The, the problem with the draft is we still don't have a unit 38 agreement. And so when I showed it to the attorney, he's like, yes, this can work. And he's working on making it so it can work. And Ken, um, if he was on that group, as, you know, we, we really follow a lot of different wording and how, how to govern basically five committees governing superintendent is where we don't. He just had past practice. And some of the past practice has been based on a union agreement. It's, it, cause there's some of the stuff that you guys were doing follows what a union agreement do. But, um, we don't have a copy of that. And so, um, the idea of going back and creating a union agreement can get very dicey and very political because, of what it says and how the power structure works within that. So he's going to try to go the route that we're going, Ken.
Yeah.
He did have a meeting with Desi, um, as well, because the Department of Education wants to know how we're setting things up. They don't particularly care about union agreements. Um, they care about regional agreements and they'd rather see us regionalize. Um, but we just all know that's not probably, um, realistic. So I continue to want to make sure that we at least get a governance policy procedure in place that the committee will follow. So that if, um, you ever have to take action on a superintendent in the sense of even hiring one, any of that kind of thing, there is, it's clear how those decisions are made. Cause right now, if you were to hire, we've talked about this a hundred times, but if you try to hire a superintendent, Deerfield wanted somebody, Sunderland wanted somebody else, there's no language about how you come to common terms about hiring superintendent, just disagreeing. Same thing as if I got in trouble in one district, would you sit at the table of the discipline hearing if I did something in Sunderland? You know, there's no comment, there's no con, there's no conversation about how that works. And without that, I think it puts you guys in a spot of, legally it would be a kind of a mess.
True.
So, um, anyway, so this, what we put together does answer some of those things, but doesn't go back to, um, at some point, we're going to have to come back around and look at the union agreement again.
Right.
So at least we get a, a stopgap in place so that at least it can function, uh, on paper with that. Superintendent evaluation, um, while we were meeting regarding that, Ken and Bob said, hey, can we move up the superintendent evaluation earlier so that we do it at the joint meeting? Um, I started putting that together. I went to Sunderland's meeting on Tuesday and, uh, Jessica's like, um, you don't have to do it after year three, you can do it every other year. I was like, well, if I don't do it this year, I can do it every other year. But Ken said, um, he is going to want to run that by the committees to see if they agree with doing that. Right, Ken?
That's correct. Yeah, that was my suggestion today was that we at least ask other members of this committee, and if you could ask your other committees, I mean, just to make sure that we're all in agreement. I, I think that, um, if we don't have to do an evaluation, it gives the newer, newer members of our school committees, and I think we have a fair number of them this year, don't we? That a, a chance to get a full year under their belt with, and be able to participate in the evaluation process, you know, more, more knowledgeably, I guess, is the way I'd put it.
Right, so the, basically what it's saying is that teachers, after the third year, get professional status are on every other evaluation cycle. And so the same administrators are, are in the same boat, or superintendents are in the same boat.
Right.
So I'm in my, I'm my fourth official year, my fifth year of service, but I was an intern for a year. So, um, so it, it does become the question of whether or not we evaluate it. So.
And the only other piece was that if, if he did not have a contract that was salary specific through the five years of the contract, would the committees want to be considering salary changes without an evaluation? But since we don't have that issue, he, uh, his salary is set for next year. I don't see as neat, as burning a need for an evaluation, given his proficient, almost, um, borderline exemplar performance evaluation last year. So.
So Ken, how do you want to, it's again, we don't have an op, we don't have an operational.
We don't have an operational.
It, it's, I can't.
You know, I would just, what does this committee think? Do you want to evaluate Darius this year or do you mind waiting a year? That's the question.
Then can we, 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 even before you go into that, can we run into the problem of, what if you don't want to evaluate, but Conway does?
Oh, I know.
And so a part of me is kind of wants to say like, let the chairs.
Okay.
Members and they should all talk to each other and then let me know.
There you go, Carrie.
Any one disreconcile.
It's, it's not the end of the world either, you know, I love this thing together, but.
But shouldn't we have, I mean, shouldn't we have a procedure? Because maybe we don't want to do it this year because it's you and you had such a good evaluation last year. I think, you know, yeah. But what about in the future? Does it, does, do we need to have something that's?
Wait, and you haven't had this problem because you've lost some confidence in making it work.
The, uh, yeah, I mean.
Well, I'm a little bit tired, man. So I'd like to say it be that way, but.
It's basically the, the language is such, Mary, that it says that if he has achieved the rating of proficient or exemplar, you don't need to do an evaluation in the following year. If it's needs improvement or, you know, less than proficient, then you need to continue. And I think it's the needs improvement with something like a very short timeframe on, on the new evaluation. So, um, it, it, it's just, it's a one year hiatus and we're back, evaluate the following year. If it's again proficient or, you know, proficient plus or even, even higher than, again, you, you would go a full year without having to evaluate.
You can also talk with next year's contract year, so.
Right, next year's the contract year, so.
I think it makes sense to like mirror the teacher, like if there's already sort of like that schedule in place that teachers follow, then that as the leader of the district, that makes sense to me too. Who would follow that?
Mary, if you're, I think it's, we are, it's setting precedent if this, uh, could or cannot be called a teacher, but we are kind of.
The language, the language is there. When I hear Ken explain it, yeah.
I mean, super, the, the thing about super, the one thing about it is it gives you feedback, but the other side of it, there's not many superintendents that are evaluated out. The committee just simply doesn't either renew their contract or negotiate for them to leave. That's not the working situation. So there's a part of me that gets frustrated with the evaluation process because that's not really, as, you know, another school member said, we'll let you know when you're not doing your job.
Well, that would be the other thing, like.
You know, there's some truth to that, like.
And, and Darius, I would, I, I would just read this to the committee so that they, they know I, I asked the question. Within his contract under evaluation, it says the superintendent will be evaluated by the committees on an annual basis as mutually agreed by the parties in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 71, Section 38, comma, Department of Elementary and Secondary Regulations, comma, and the Superintendent Evaluation System as prescribed by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And the, um, the evaluation system as prescribed is what Jessica was referring to in their conversation the other night. And, uh, it, to me, it makes sense.
Okay, so we should, we need to take a vote on this or are we just?
No, this was just a general, I just wanted to get a, I, I just wanted you to have a general feel of where the committee's at. And I was approached because I'm the chairman of the joint committee. Um, and Bob Hollis is the frontier chair. So he and I have typically talked with Darius on evaluation procedures and things. And that's, that's how it came up. So I think we can take a one year hiatus and I make sure that by January of next year, we're ready to evaluate them in a contract year.
We'll be getting a letter from you wishing you could.
Okay, skipping this year with consistent reviews from the past couple of years.
Yes. Great.
Thank you.
Alrighty, bring this to the end of the agenda. Unless anyone desperately needs to add something at the end. I would take a motion to.
Is there an oppor, is there an opportunity for, um, public input? Or just really a couple of questions I have?
Uh, officially, no. There's an opportunity, is it regarding the budget base?
Um, yeah, can I, can I just, yeah, so how about I'll ask my, my questions and if that's not apropos, then I'll just ask them when I can. But I'm curious about why the SOA funds do not help our district and why the fair share um, funds are said not to be able to help our district.
So SOA is, is proportioned out by, are basically right now, we are, um, we are in a held, it's called a whole, uh, whole harmless state, being that we don't get any more money because of our declining enrollment and the makeup of, um, the wealth of our towns. So we're considered to be, we're in the middle range and then, and then the spectrum of wealth. And majority of SOA money is going to the larger urban districts, um, where they're getting, I think it's like 20 schools that are getting the majority of SOA money.
Okay, and how about the fair share?
Your share is going to be, so I've met, um, at the superintendent's meeting, um, roundtable for Pioneer Valley. We had the Taxpayer Association of Massachusetts give a, give a presentation that was asked about, can we see money coming from that? He said, I would not expect it. One, we won't see it in the following year because they have no idea how much money they're actually going to collect. It gets really technical when you get into how, um, tax finance works. But the other side is going to be divided up between higher education and, um, and, and K to, K to 12, it's also going to be divided up. It's also going to be divided up between roads and whatever, and that's all got to be appropriated. The majority of appropriation of those kinds of monies are going to where the SOA money is going. And they could actually take that money and put it into the SOA. They don't have to create a different account with it. So it's all, so he said, I would not be, you're not going to see a windfall of money coming from that. He also said, because he's not their nonpartisan group, he's also saying, it's also going to be interesting if there's going to be an exodus of wealthy people who will move to their second homes to avoid the taxation because it's the largest taxation in over fifty years, change. So he's being, he's just, this person presented is just very matter-of-factly about it. And so we're, yeah.
That last point has been discussed ad nauseam, and that's not really what the research is showing. But, and I'll keep this really brief, I promise. I just think that, because I'm trying to keep it very practical for the next meeting that you guys are going to be presenting at the public hearing and I'm, to not mince words, like, I'm horrified by what I'm finding out in this meeting tonight. And I think that a lot of taxpayers and parents who have been, were lobbied about the fair share amendment, are going to feel like, wow, what did we, what did we just vote for? I thought we were going to get something out of that. So I understand that our beef with that doesn't lie with, with the school committee, that this is a state level thing, but I think it should be prepared for, that there might be that kind of, if anybody's paying attention, there will and should be that kind of pushback. If they're not, then no worries. But, and I consider like my personal role to make that known, to channel that anger, disappointment, disillusionment to the appropriate places in the state. But I think that the school committee and the district could help support that narrative, keep educating people that that's how that process is working and that, you're right, we should get some of that money or some of that money or some of that money. Like, there's, there's money out there. So we have to advocate for that so that it's appropriated to us. But I just think, be prepared. If I went to the public hearing without, without having been here tonight, I would have been like, what are you talking about? We just voted for all this money for schools and you're talking about eliminating positions? I'm horrified. And I understand all the work that went into it and that I'm preaching to the choir, but.
I'll tell you, in regards to that, where you could, you should talk to your state legislators because there is no process yet. Would they, the bill is very vague on, on the, the, on the, and that money, and they don't, there's no indication of how they're going to appropriate those funds, you know, which, who's going to get what percentage? And because that hasn't been figured out, that's why they're saying there's going to be a long delay before we see any of that money. Will we ever see some money? It's possible, but right now, it was like, you're not getting any next year or even the year after.
So I personally made that clear to people that I canvassed and, and lobbied for the fair share. Your job, our job is not done after this. We have to allocate some allocation of that, those funds. So I get that. When you guys present at a public hearing and people are hearing this, you know, that has to, that narrative should be clear that, because otherwise the beef is going to come down on school committee and our, our towns. And look, we just voted to raise taxes and we don't get anything out of it. So then the next time we ask for a tax raise, that's going to be an argument. So I just ask that the committee kind of support the narrative that, you know, we're doing the best we can, but the beef lies with, not even the beef, we have to contact the state. This is really more of a state issue. And for all this like kicking the can down, you know, these past couple of years and patching it all together, well, now we're at the precipice of all that. And now we're starting to feel what other districts have felt for a long time because of school choice. We, we got an influx, so we got the influx of money that came with those students, but other districts have been losing revenue at those students. And now we're starting to see that too. And so it really all comes back to the whole school choice thing working as it's supposed to. And that's ultimately having school committees have to make these kinds of choices, breaking down public education. That's the part I won't belabor up tonight because it's late and you're tired and preaching to the choir. But just to prepare for those meetings, we, I think we, I would love to see you, us, whatever, get a head start on that narrative that it's time, you're mad about that, here's our representative's numbers, and we know exactly who they are and exactly what their numbers are. And they're generally supportive of public education and can go to Boston then and say, hey, this is what I'm hearing from my constituents and something needs to change. So that's, thanks so much for those last two questions and, and taking my input. I didn't realize about the whole public speaking thing. Believe it or not, I'm still trying to get used to all the changes. So I appreciate it and thank you all.
Thank you, Laura.
Okay.
Well.
We did a motion to.
We did a motion and then seconded.
Okay, though we didn't vote. Okay. So, Erica?
Oh, yes.
Carrie, yes? Any yes? I'm sorry, I'm speaking for you. Mary? Ken?
Yes.
All righty.